You have a focus and...
Better check his address on that.
Did your...
His address, Mike. Well, no, the focus is...
Yeah. And I'm a non-focus.
All right, well, they show... I've always got them before.
Well, I have, like... I think it's just on my computer. It's focused. The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consider for approval, mention of agenda.
Make a motion for the mention of agenda. Second?
Motion from Jen Salt and a second from... Stand adjourned to approve the mention of agenda presented in favor of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Follow the same sign. Motion carries. We're ready for you ladies.
Well, they were... It was pretty scary when I saw them out there.
9:00 AM. Waukesha County Library Association to discuss funding for the fiscal year 2020. Good morning.
Good morning. I'll just say thank you for listening to us again and for funding our libraries. I'm Sharon Hippen from Buckles Center.
I'm Jackie Olson. I'm the new director at Lake Mills.
Krista Gysker, Forest City.
Virginia Cooper-Wright.
What was that name again?
Uh, let me think a little bit.
Don't magic.
I'm getting old.
And Barry, Barry Florence from Thompson.
Don't ever admit it.
Oh, okay.
No. And we're dismissing Barry from Thompson.
Yeah.
But, um, we're asking again 22,000 per library to help us with, um, the operating expenses. I know my book budget is getting tight, so trying to get some different books, like the large print, and there's no discount on large print books, and so sometimes you end up spending like $35 for a book. So, makes it really hard for me to expand that section when I can almost get two books for the general collection out of that price.
In the small print, they, they... You can get a discount, but on the large print, you can't?
Right.
Well, the small print is cheaper.
I'm sure it is, but golly, it's...
Yeah.
Well, you know...
As you, as you get older, sure is harder to read in small print.
90% of my fakers want large print.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was waiting the section out of the stuff that hadn't really been checked out or part of the series, and we had probably 40 that I'd pulled out, and then we decided to put them back. You know, when you start looking at how many people are checking out, you know, books. So, I was like, okay. So, we had to do some quick rearranging and move them so they don't learn on the bottom and the top. It's a little hard with trifocals to read. I'm doing it myself.
How many bedrooms would you guess need large print?
Percent? I wouldn't say... Maybe about 15% that come in.
It kind of goes by, like, when people get to needing cataract surgery, then they need to read large print, so they read everything in our collection, and then after their cataract surgery, they can go back to reading again. So, it's, it's kind of good to keep all of them because it's a different group of people reading large print.
When you buy them, um, and after you have them for so long, you put them on trade? I mean, you do that with other books, right?
I mean, we put them out for our book sale, so...
Like for interlibrary loan?
Oh, that, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I got you. And we also have a collection of about 25 books that we rotate with Forest Plaza. So, they have a checkout system up there, so... Yeah.
And I suppose the people that need large print probably do, do so well with technology, like a little tablet or something to read with.
Yeah. Though I do find people are coming back. You know, they get tired of holding that little thing, and I haven't switched over. It's like, no, I want a book. Especially reading in bed, it's like without... Right.
So, the state library is just offering a new service for a year, I guess. Um, a courier service, so for interlibrary loan books, we will not have to pay postage to send them out or to get them returned. This courier will stop at each of our libraries once a week and take interlibrary loan books back to the hub where they'll be distributed to the other libraries. So, that should save us a little bit on postage, but they've only promised it for one year.
And it's only for public libraries, so if I need something from the University of Iowa, then we have to pay the postage for that because they aren't part of that.
It's supposed to start on the 14th, so we don't even know for sure how it's going to work. But we're all on the same route.
They haven't written the rules yet.
Kind of, yeah. We might have to change them a little, yeah. But, but, something new for us to learn.
Yeah. So, I think my pickup's like Tuesday at 3:40, and Thompson is like 20 minutes before, and it's like, you can't drive that fast.
We'll see how it works, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, it'll be a good service if it works. It's kind of like the ADA vams, except this is just for someone's library.
Maybe it'll be like the old, the old horse, you know? Grab the bag as they go.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Yeah. No, they're going to have tubs, but... Well, I think they're delivering them this week, something like that.
Not today, a week from today.
Yeah.
To our libraries.
Yep. So, we have...
Supposedly to every library in the state once.
They even have a special label that you have to go into the computer and print out, and if you don't use that label maker, it won't take them. That's... Just have to jump through hoops with the state.
Never heard of that before.
Um, if you guys would want to grab that, uh, or if we have a new rule, we have to have everybody sign in so we can know who is at each meeting. It's a federal rule that we have to abide by.
Got it. And we got our signature here for our proposal.
Okay. All right. I know, we all appreciate what you guys do for the residents in our town. I think it's an important part of what we can provide.
Yeah, I didn't really realize how important most of this year. Personally, I've encountered people that need it. Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, it's like never a dull day. You know, it's like, you have this. No. Would you like to try this? And one of the things that I don't purchase hardly anymore is reference material. And in the new library, you know, the people we've been working with, I want to stress reference in our genealogy or some, it's on microfilm. One of the things I'd like to do is get our microfilm put on CD discs or on the webpage. That's going to be something down the road to increase. Yeah.
Well, I think we, you got our backing. Like I say, I, I personally saw the importance of it this year, so...
Thank you.
But our budgets are really, really tight this year, so...
I realize that. Are they ever going to finish working on the outside of the building?
What's that?
They ever going to finish the outside?
Uh, hopefully this winter. They're going to be moving around to the east entrance and tearing that apart after the... Probably before they even get done with this. We're getting to the last stage of it. Then we do the roof.
I was just going to say that. Don't forget the roof.
What's after the roof?
Hopefully, hopefully a few years.
Maintenance after that.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for taking our request again. Nothing here.
Well, I understand the rough situation with the building, which by the way, is not going to be any city money, the county money.
Yeah.
When we get going.
I see they took to talk to the upper tower things, whatever, off.
Yeah. I mean, we want a whole new look to the building. We don't want to have them say, oh, you didn't do anything to the outside. And it's been leaking all summer, like I said.
One more place to leak.
Yeah. They were supposed to have gotten more serious yesterday, but I see they haven't done anything. Of course, I had the day off, so I wasn't there, but the tires look like they're all in the same spot up there to hold it down.
Yeah. Well, it'll be an exciting project.
Lot of work.
It's kind of like our, our, our... Waukesha County Conservation Building, you know? None of our monies went into it. They've done a lot of, a lot of fundraising to get to that point.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just still working on the perspective when we go out and talk. They're from Atlanta, Georgia. Came highly recommended in Beth Valley. Here in town, knew the main person, so... Yeah.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not getting on it. I am.
You're welcome.
They're thinking the same thing about you.
We already had that discussion and all that. And we're coming here to give us the business.
All right. Consider for approval, first tier campus for this. They used to do a little... So, he did have a problem.
All the pins in here should all be blue. Yeah.
Okay, so this one should be there.
That one's good.
Can we all sign the white ones?
Yep. Let me just listen if you have any questions.
Everybody don't know how we could.
It was a better turnout than I thought it was going to be, though.
Oh, yeah, there was.
It was decent.
I saw some of the numbers, election night, and... Really. Just, just school board and city officials. I thought that was...
But there were some challenges in the, in the, um, city ones, but was there any in the school board ones? Were they all...
Yeah, there was the...
Yeah, there was a Forest City one. And that's it. Just that one with Keala and the...
In Lake Mills, when there was no choice, it was just...
Right. Yeah, same with North Iowa, too.
Well, the best part about it is that next week...
You got to do it all in Oregon.
Yeah, we bring in all the other counties, PAMPAC and Cazu and where, and Sarah Bordeaux. Yep. And then City Forest City, and then we put it all together and then do this again.
Do you do that for NIAA, too?
Yeah. Well, actually, no, we... We, Sarah Bordeaux does the secret here for NIAA.
Don't have to take so this year, though.
You know, when they change the laws and so drastically, there's always a few backups, but I think, um, everything...
Smooth considering.
For the most part, went well. We had some problems with some printers that... The printers shut off. If there hasn't somebody that came real...
All timed out?
Yeah. So, then if they forgot to count on the printer before they used the machine, then we'd have to shut everything down and bring it all back up again for it to print. So, that was kind of a pain, but we're having Eric look into...
Settings.
Settings and figure out how to fix that.
There's no, there's nothing to sign on, though. It's just information.
Is that the whole stack there's?
Yeah. The whole stack to sign is what he has, and then the other ones are just...
Well, maybe combining the two will, you know, in the future, keep the numbers up. Have some...
I always, you know, it's... To me, it's... If there's races, people go out and vote. If there's nothing to vote for, I think people have a harder time showing up.
Yeah, well, people in the city council, Buffalo. I mean, I guess she's got a daughter that lives there and, uh, you know, sister-in-law that's lived there for years, but, uh, her sister. She don't live in Buffalo since May. Which I guess she said in her article in the paper is that she could bring a fresh perspective. I guess that'd be the truth.
Yeah, they had the biggest races.
Forest City, the, the one race was pretty much a landslide, and the other one was...
There was one here that was very, or two that was very close.
In Thompson?
Oh, Forest City. Everything else was very lopsided, except for the last two here. Missy Reynolds and Chad Reese.
Yeah, but those are both...
Those are both for two, so both of them will be in anyway.
Oh, so, oh.
Yeah.
You want to take those last line of when I get back?
It is in.
You want to sign it on the second line? It'd be nice if another justice process, we could get rid of, um, of the Iowa links. I think it just push that in the HEPAC county. It'd make that so much easier.
It definitely would.
Well, we, we got everybody in district. We have, uh... Four, is it four or five?
Four, five, or six, one of the two. It's a family.
That lives around the edge of the counties. We have to actually by ballots for...
For those five.
Five people.
So, who doesn't make this your...
It's a board, just like that. He's either the secretary or the...
Yeah, I'll take that one, so...
Hey, Dave did a fantastic job as producing selection.
I heard he was ruling the place with an iron fist, pretty much.
I appreciate it.
Best of the lady. Morning.
Good morning. Morning, Dave.
How are we today?
Standing.
Oh, gosh.
You got more than one bullet in that radio?
To the radio? I don't think I have any bullets in here.
Jack.
In someplace I got a gun.
Please ask worse than Marty.
Are we done talking about Durin Durin? No.
Oh, we haven't got that.
Thank God, I didn't miss it.
No, you didn't miss the Rocket's Library Group. We could have used you for a backup. Put a little, yeah, a little crowd control there. They were getting a lot of in.
Oh, shoot. How's Randy? Saw him coming on. Good.
I'm already looked at the results of this one here.
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the first tier campus for city school elections.
Second that.
So, it's paper. Bill's done, uh, looking at it.
Altered.
You ready to vote? Yeah. A motion from Derby and Second. Stand adjourned to approve the campus for school elections, first tier. All who in favor say aye.
Aye.
Follow the same sign. Motion carries. Point new architect for the remainder of the stone replacement Kentucky project.
So, I say those out to you Friday?
To me, it's pretty obvious.
Yeah.
As long as you're all good, to me.
What's obvious? I'm, because I'm not sure.
Really? I don't believe it.
Well, I met with both of them, so I...
One had a, a defined price for each task. The other one was...
Not to exceed, too.
Yeah. The other one was per hour.
That scared me. Well, when you met with them, it was one or two.
This is where I really wish that I could go into closed session and talk to you about this, because...
You don't...
The... Both seemed very good. The, um... Yeah, I was not going to say anything because I wanted to be right there.
Well, from a number standpoint, to me, it's the one not to exceed.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I'd like to know, uh...
So...
Reviewing with them, uh, is one of them more than nine with what we want to do?
I guess the only, only problem I had was, um, two gentlemen came with, with this one. And, um, the one just...
All satellite reception.
Didn't say anything the whole time. And if that's who we're going to work with, that makes me nervous.
Yeah.
Um, the other guy was very professional. I mean, both of them were very professional, um, but...
Is that the one not to exceed?
Um...
No, it was that one.
Yeah, that one.
The other one.
Um...
See, on the flip side of your concern, is a concern, are they, uh, a master con artist?
They did the, uh, emergency services center down here.
Oh, did they?
Yeah. So, that's how we came up with that name.
Okay, right.
I think they trusted us pretty well down there. I look at this being more similar to the way we're working now with architect we had on an as-needed basis or we might be able to save some money if we could...
Well, then the two positives, uh, change.
Like I said, I think either one of them did a great job.
So, was it Gary Anderson that came with, or somebody else?
Gary came with this one, and then, um, Mark and Jared came with this one. Mark, Mark's one.
Yeah, Gary's got some ties to Forest City, too, doesn't he?
Um, I don't know.
I think he does.
Why do I know that?
I would be very happy to work with Mark over here.
Yeah, sure.
Um, and like I said, I would work with Gary over here. So, I, I think you don't want to...
Yeah, but if you're not going to get any input from them, then, yeah. That's not good.
Well, we can assume they're not going to give it either.
Well, he stayed quiet the whole time when he died with Carla. You know?
The Mark did a good job. I, I was impressed with him. Right?
And sometimes you just, yeah. If you want to be around a little longer, you like to do the talk. Well, yeah, that's true. Like I say, my own concern is, uh... I like the not to exceed.
Yeah, yeah, that's... But what happens if there's another task we have to do? They're only identifying two tasks, where this other one is by the hour, and we can just do it as we want.
Right. And normally likely, there will be another task.
Historically, it has shown its, its, uh, ugly face as we got around here.
The other thing, um, that, with this one is that he's willing to use documents that are not AIA. And I don't know if that's something that you guys want to have, but they, basically, they pay for the documents with the AIA, so then that document fee is passed on to us.
It's not required.
No, it's not. So, that's why he's willing, hope he can use this other document, too, which I don't know how big of a deal that is.
Well, would, and, and do you know what those documents would be? What, what could they, AIA?
Except the American...
Yeah, no, but what would they have to do with the project? They wouldn't know anything about it.
We have to pay for the use of those documents if it was...
Yeah, but what, what are the documents going to show?
Well, they...
There, here.
The, the one.
On the very back.
Very back.
It's the change order type form.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah.
And the page in front of that is the form that he is willing.
That's not necessary. One of the representatives, pretty much representative, sir, originally. Yeah, the email. I don't.
Seems like you haven't ever seen that.
Unless that was something else I saw.
There was a Gary Anderson that used to live north of Thompson. That was my age. And I was wondering if that was the same area.
On this, you're just paying for pre, pre-made forms. Back to Vegas, or they showed. That's what we'd be paying for. Any good architect.
That's not the AIA.
Well, that isn't.
That's just.
Is?
The, the, this is the AIA.
Well, there's no reason to, yeah, you're right, there's no reason to.
Well, there, I guess that one, that's your. And he just gave two examples, or the one you pay for, the other one you don't. And he said there was no need to have to use it, so. Well, is that the consensus then, that we want to go by the hour?
You know, as long as the emergency management, was it emergency man?
Yeah, the emergency services.
Yeah, as long as they were satisfied, you know, that's good enough for me, it really is.
All right, well, I guess I'll entertain a motion to. Architect.
Except these, these guys? I'll make a motion to approve Scott and Anderson architects for the courthouse repairs.
All right, again. A motion from Stanford and Second for Gentle. To approve the, uh, hiring Scott and Anderson architects to do the remainder of the stone replacement and tuck pointing project. Paper workforce and design. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Scott's not here, so is there anything we need to ask Eric down there? No concerns in the rows.
Oh. Glad to take a piss. Oh, boy.
Okay. Actually, can I have two original? If you've got a copy, we'll do two originals, so that I can give you one and keep one.
I'll move on to consider for approval letter to Northwest Iowa care. Did you guys look over what Sandy had sent out then? Um, I know we should get her up here. She's got questions.
I didn't print any of that off, because I didn't think it looked like it was done, so.
No, we got some discussion to have on it.
Okay.
Check here, seventy-five forty-five.
Hi, Sandy.
Hi, Sandy. You want to come up and talk to us about the?
Sure.
All right.
Sure.
Now, there's, like here. What do you want on there for your address and things like that, communication wise?
Just my email address, I guess.
But is there a, a physical address if something has to be sent out? Which, would you have it to the courthouse? Would you have it at your house?
It's supposed to my stuff, but I can't really get anything on my home.
I've got some committees, they sent it to my house. And if it's a week between getting done, or you may want to have that.
Put my address out there, I guess, that'd be no problem.
If it comes here, I can always scan it in and send it to you, too, right away.
That's true.
Either way.
Yeah.
Sandy was saying that there is at least one county pulling out of that number.
Yes, check.
So, Brian, it's blown up.
Like, you know, I. Why are they going?
They go in the blind.
They're going with blind.
With the blind last.
Sue something, or Sue Rivers, or something.
Yeah.
And I, I, you know, I don't know what the issue is, why they're doing it. I don't think she would, I don't know if she knows now, or she didn't know last week.
Maybe the grass hasn't been there on the other side.
Still has to be moved. Well, um, the grass is certainly, uh, much less expensive. They retained a less than four dollar levy. And decided that they wanted to do a reward and passed, and it just barely did pass. It was a three, three to two vote. On there, a five dollar levy, and then it was a four to one vote to approve the fifteen dollar.
And we're at thirteen.
Which would have been a great thing for us, though we're at thirty-five eighteen. Would have been a great, just, you know, if we would have been there, we would still have, uh, uh, four hundred and some thousand dollars worth of fund balance, probably over all six hundred thousand, which was fund balance that could have been spent. Around here.
One of the things she was talking about, it's hard to give an answer for, is how much money are we going to bring with us? You know, cash.
Oh, yeah.
Balance. That's a.
That's a moving, that's a moving number.
Yeah. I don't know, because I, I guess my theory on an answer like that would be for. Just give them what each year carryover was, and our percentage of it, and they can, you can say we don't know at this point, you know, this is what.
Well, I would certainly, we, we get to keep our percentage of the fund balance, whatever, and then if, like, if we leave midstream now, we just paid a hundred and eighty some thousand, I would assume that you would deduct on the, you know, on a per day basis, we would get some of that hundred and eighty some thousand back, I would guess. Do you?
I have no idea.
Maybe not.
Well, hands over kind of a spending spree goes on before the end of this year.
Exactly.
Yeah, who's the head of Northwest?
Kim.
Wilson.
So, Wilson.
Wilson.
Wilson, okay, well, that's it. And is that the same position that Bob has, or she has?
Yeah.
So, she's state employee?
No, she's county.
She's county.
Bob's a county employee.
Oh, Bob is a county employee, okay. So, all right. They're going to become, no, they're going to become their own employer record, no, CSS.
Hancock County is supposed to only, one employer, so it should be state, the only state.
No.
There'll still be some kind of employment, because they're, they'll get IFRS, whatever.
Sure. Okay, so let's go through some of the things we need to answer.
Okay, well, okay.
So, Bill was talking about, was there anything on number, number one question?
Which, is this one right here, or what is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing there you need?
Well, I'm assuming number one you want.
It's going to be Bill, Johnny.
But I'm assuming you want Bill to be that.
He said.
And on here, it says you need to give the name, address, phone numbers, email for, for Bill. I didn't know if you wanted his office or phone number. So, you're going to have to answer that particular question.
You can do it for it to you right away, so it comes here with, we just have the courthouse address.
So, that's probably what you need to add there, with your phone number.
And his work email address.
Work email.
And I suppose, do you want your cell phone? But, yeah, as long as it's not going to be.
Ministerial everywhere, yeah.
For communication purposes, um, and. So then, down on number two, was there any questions there?
Can you read the question? Does your current M A, M A, H E S region provide services to clients in your county that are not offered as core services? Northwest Iowa Care Connections says yes. How will these core services, which are currently offered, be changed? When Beaufort County will follow the service menu, Northwest Care Connections, when Beaufort County will add. Revenue to the sheriff's budget to cover psychiatric medications for inmates, to the social services budget to cover P E services, and to the public health budget to pay for nursing and home maker costs, which, being over there, we're going to say enough money that we're not going to end up spending any extra money out of the county.
And I'm assuming these are not what is part of their menu of service. If it is, it's no big deal, but if not. And I think when I talked to the nurse's office, they were looking at, since they started, roughly maybe fifteen thousand a year that they get, so. And I think.
Peyton, take yours and make a copy for me.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Did I send that to you, Carla?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm assuming that P E services, when I asked Duncan, I just for the numbers, because I, not, it was like ten thousand a year, under ten thousand. And whatever the sheriff's meds are, I asked Dave, and I haven't seen that yet, so it's still going to be quite a bit less than what their levy is, when you. I'm assuming.
And even before they approved the fifteen dollar levy, their levy was only, it was thirty, I think, before. So, they've always been less than CSS, and provided. Just as many services to the people, and so, not only do they have. All the new jobs that CSS has, CSS is, I believe, trying to become a provider, not just. They want, in the end, provide services, taking away from all the private entities that do that, but they'll just become.
I think the big thing, you want to make sure people are getting the services that they need, and there shouldn't be a delay of weeks and weeks in order to get that done for people.
Absolutely.
That's what, that's what's so frustrating about.
Yeah.
So, going forward, number three, uh, we don't have any outstanding debt to. Number four, we're not getting into litigation. Number five. Does your county intend on funding on a per capita basis for the funding? M H D S, Beaufort County will levy the amount.
I just thought that's what, probably what it.
Yeah, requires. But then, beyond that, if they don't provide certain services, we'll.
But what?
More, so we can pass it into the.
But it will come out of different budget, it can't come out of Fund Ten.
Oh, it can?
No, it has to.
Oh, really?
So, that's why you want to increase the nurse's budget by fifteen thousand, whatever the sheriff and the general relief budget by ten. Yeah, it can't come, it ha, if it comes out of Fund Ten, it has to go there.
So, how can it come out of Fund Ten going through the one over there, then?
It does come out of Fund Ten there.
It comes out of Fund Ten to CSS, and CSS reverses the fifteen thousand back.
Back through there, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it falls through there, then?
Yes.
And if we want to keep doing that ourselves, then we just will drop fifteen thousand out of, uh, the levy balance and add it to the nurses.
And you're still.
Yeah, it'll, the county will come out the same, it'll just come from different directions.
And I guess the thing is, too, what I look at here is. And then the nurses can go ahead and provide the services like they do right now to, to clients. They don't have to go through the, all the extra paperwork. They don't have to wait for a notice of decision from the region that we're going to pay or not pay, and they can do it right away, because it's, it's already in their budget.
So, Fund Ten.
Is the mental health budget.
Yeah, it takes care of all of the items that Northwest, as a group, deems necessary?
Yes.
Dave?
But I can tell you that, but, but over here in this region, it pays for more than what they do there. That, you know, pays for an I-STAR team, it pays for.
What are, what are the other counties thinking about that? A little confused there.
Well, it's just extra stuff that he's paying for in.
Oh, you mean Bob?
Yeah.
Oh.
So, so, has I-STAR.
And it's just.
Been any benefit, though?
Um, I'm just, so.
It's just like, I shouldn't say this, but it's just like when they were paying for ICF level of care at Country View in Waterloo, you know, and as soon as that program was sold to others, somebody other than Blacklock County, the funding stopped. So, it leads me to believe the only reason they paid for it is because it was a county owner's.
People's Blacklock County. So, it seems like a possibility.
Yeah. And I can tell you that part of the majority of the people there were from Blacklock County.
I have a quick question. Hancock, are they going to?
No, it's not on their agenda. They're not, no.
I, I think they're just going to see what happens.
They're voting on a one, one employer resolution right now, as we speak.
And that's for that region?
Yeah. And I don't know what that one employer is. No one was very clear on it. Everybody's going to be.
Yeah, I, I, it was already voted on to, for to go ahead with it on the CSS law. I don't know where, I, I, that every county should be doing what they're doing right now to vote on the one player.
The reason we're not is because I don't know what we're doing, and so, it's hard. I don't know if we're going to be with.
Is there a deadline for that?
CS, January first.
So, we've got some time.
The other problem is, I don't know what Bobby's doing, if she's going to stay with us, or if she's going to stay with CSS, or, so if Bobby's not going to stay with us, there's no point in doing the employer record.
I, I think we're probably better off waiting, I'll pick it down there a little bit, so we know more about this.
And that's why I've been waiting.
She wants to stay with CSS? Everything will stay the same for her, right?
I don't know that.
Oh.
I don't know that.
Well, there, there, her choice is.
I'm assuming, but, but I don't know.
Yeah. She can go with the employer record, they can have her job guaranteed, or if she decides not to, that she'll have to reapply for her job back at CSS, or something like that.
And then, uh, the mental health advocate is, has to be paid out of Fund Ten, which we've been doing, and that's not part of the region, that's part of the county.
So, what, what do you guess will be costs for part of the county and not for Northwest?
Can you ask me that again?
Okay, we can only take so much out of Fund Ten, right? What's already settled?
You can only take out of Fund Ten what they ask you to levy.
Right, so if we go above that, we have to.
You can't, you can't go above that.
We can't go spending above Fund Ten.
Oh. But for other services they don't provide, like through the sheriff's office and new public health, you levy otherwise.
Yeah, that's my question.
Right, yeah.
You're saying people are paying the levy, it's just in a different fund.
Right, and that's what I'm.
And then it goes through Fund Ten, we'll have to go to Northwest Iowa for connections to them, and if they don't reimburse that service, they can't, they, they're not going to do it. Right. Or, or they could be talked into it, possibly, but, uh. So, that's my question. How, how many items are there?
Well, that's what I said, as far as the nursing, I think you're looking at roughly fifteen thousand a year for P E services, roughly ten thousand a year, and I'm unsure about, uh, the sheriff with his meds, it's like, then. But the thing is, maybe that's, that could be part of their menu, and it's already included in Fund Ten.
With the levy that they used to have, if they go back up to thirty, after their fund balance is spent down, as soon as while they're doing the fifteen dollar one. When they go back up to thirty, we'll still be saving fifty thousand dollars out of our budget, because if you, you take five dollars per capita, times ten thousand in the county, that's fifty thousand dollars that we could allocate to other places if we still provide the services.
It just wouldn't be through the.
It just wouldn't, yeah, it just wouldn't be the mental health budget.
It's just through our other levy.
Yes.
Point of clarification. I thought the sheriff didn't utilize the psychiatric rooms that he has at the jail. Instead, he takes them to.
Yeah.
The hospital. The hospitals.
No, he's, he's, he's not using telehealth right now?
I, I'm saying that I don't think he keeps people in the jail, I think he ships them down to the hospital.
Well, if they're psychiatric, they're going to go to Five East, if he can't, you know, if they have some mental health issues that he can't control.
In need of medication.
But if they're, if they're in need of medication and they have to see a psychiatrist, at one time they were doing telehealth with the psychiatrist over the computer, and then he would issue the, he would prescribe the medication, and the region was paying for that.
If you've got somebody that's bipolar in the jail, then you have to provide their medication.
And the region was doing that.
Okay.
In fact, if you, if you, if you want to get some, get your healthcare paid for, go to something else, just get yourself rested.
And that's, that's the sheriff's responsibility to make sure that's taken, that, that's paid for.
Okay.
And the region was doing that.
I, I thought he said he wasn't handling anything like that, he was-
And if he's, and if he's not, then we don't need to, it's less money we have to pay.
Well, yeah.
And see, what other issues too, when somebody goes into the jail, their Medicaid is no longer valid.
I didn't realize that. I, I can't figure out why anyone should have to pay for some insurance because they're at risk. It just does seem, it's a, you know, it makes it, but already is a negative, a double negative, you know, I mean, it just-
All right, let's keep moving.
All right.
Uh, next question was, do the employees, does your county contract for me? What are you going to talk about that a little bit, Sandy?
What's number?
Number six.
Six. Well, right now, your mental health advocate would come out of there, Ruthie, that this position is appointed by the book, by the county board of supervisors, and you had asked me to supervise her so I make sure all the stuff that the law requires is completed, there's a number of things you've got to do, and as far as your reporting to the state. And then I asked that I be included in that too, just so I can monitor and make sure everything is done according to what we need to do, according to their menu of services and so forth.
And that would cover just our county or-
Or the county.
Fourth and One of Baglo? And then should we indicate that on that answer?
Okay.
That, that should be added.
Okay.
To cover for, oh, it does say, yeah, One of Baglo and where to come soon, so.
And I, but he ain't got, but I didn't know if they were going to levy or not. Well, that's the mental health advocate is pointing there.
And it doesn't include Kusutha, then?
No.
Okay. And I understand Kusutha County has debt? Okay, yeah, that's water under the bridge.
Well, no, when I was reading that, did it say that, um, how would you answer, they did have debt at the time? Is there somewhere in there that-
Well, they, I suppose they have debt entirely.
They are, they, they are going to be making payments to CSS whether they're with them or not for the next, at least the next year.
Oh, that, okay.
So they do have debt.
They do have debt, but it's already been addressed in a sense.
But, yeah, so this is not our, this is not our question to answer.
They would, they would have paid it all off this year probably if they could have raised the levy higher, but they could not because of the cap, so.
But I would, I would like to answer that a different way, because Kusutha County should answer that question.
Well, they would have, I'm sure they voted, I'm sure they voted on that.
As, as One of Baglo County's answer to this-
They, they're already getting that answer from Kusutha.
Right, that's what I'm saying, our answer should be, Kusutha County should answer that question.
Yeah, all right. Because I thought it was odd that it was in there for us to answer when, they must have sent the same form to Kusutha, and then they answered that themselves.
Couldn't you just contact their auditor and give the minutes of what they decided? They would have, they would have to have decided to spend money, so.
Yeah.
No, it's already set in stone.
Right. But Terry wants to make sure we portray that to, to Northwest, so all we've got to do is get their minutes instead of having to-
But they're, at the same time, Kusutha's-
Kusutha's already answered that question.
And you need this there tomorrow.
Yeah, so I, I think the safe answer would be, Kusutha County should answer that question.
Yeah.
What is the plan for real estate owned by CSS?
When you say real estate, is that property or, you know?
Yeah.
They don't, they don't own it.
Yeah.
I don't think they do.
So I think your answer is fine on that. What does your county compute your departing fund balance? We talked about that, maybe we should just, do we know what the, the, like, the last three years with the carryforward was?
Yeah, but it is, it's all been spent down now.
But, I mean, each year you carry it forward, right?
Well, what we'll bring with us in a sense is the fund balance would be our percentage of what we put in. What is the fund balance? Do they move it back up to, is it twenty or twenty-five?
Well, I think it's a percentage of the overall fund balance for all twenty-two counties, isn't it not?
Is it a percentage of that?
I think so.
Or would it be the percentage, our, our fund balance that we would have in our account would be the percentage of what we put in every year.
I don't know what that twenty-eight E agreement says for sure.
Well, the twenty-E says it's fund balance, it's CSS's, but-
For when you leave.
When you leave, yes, that's right. Well, if it's one or the other, it's still part of it, though. No, yeah, we're going to bring money one way or the other in the fund balance, and just whether it's our percentage, and, and I would assume that our percentage of the whole fund balance now would be similar to our percentage, to that percentage, whatever it is, twenty or twenty-five percent of the fund balance is going to be now, the, the state mandated, that would be, you know, basically sixty thousand bucks if our fund balance.
Sorry, my print muscle, I want to stop.
So, how are we going to answer that?
Can we take it, can we just take it from what our fund balance?
Do you want to call Lori and ask her? Well, Lori, Jackie emailed Lori, and she emailed her back and told her that she'd have to get that from the board of directors and the CEO.
Why don't we just use our own? Just One of Baglo's fund balance.
It, it should, it should be, uh, you know, I can't remember what the number is now. What, what is the current number? They changed it, and then they changed it to a different number. They raised it to like twenty-five percent.
Doesn't necessarily mean that's what you're going to have. Because if they keep on spending.
Yeah, but in theory, they're trying to maintain about that one, so twenty or twenty-five percent.
Well, if we want to get, we have to get this done by tomorrow.
So if we, if we can establish our current fund balance and then say, but this is a moving target, or this is-
It should be approximately sixty thousand dollars.
Well, what, what's, what do we have left here? In our fund?
Fund 10 or whatever.
Because we've paid our bill for the year, right?
Uh, for the first quarter.
For the fourth.
Hold on, just got my, just got my agendas anyway.
I was going to explain that when we got to open forum.
All right. I just had to still open up my email when I turn my phone on, so. Okay, let's see what's on.
Do you want to, as I like, today?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's that number?
It'd be ninety-two thousand five hundred if it's twenty-five percent.
A bar.
It's a state, state cost.
You want me to go downstairs and get, you want me to go downstairs and get the answer that we had last year when we did this?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go, I'll get that.
So my guess is this is going to be somewhere between seventy to ninety thousand, depending on what the-
Well, it won't be ninety because to continue to use the service until we get all this-
This is what's in our actual, the Fund 10.
And what do we have left to pay?
Well, we just put a hundred and eighty-five in there, so that means fourteen thousand was what was left from the fund balance.
Huh?
Well, we just put a hundred and eighty-five, came out of there, right?
Sure, that show up?
Well, I don't have, I just gave you the, any fund balance numbers, if you want, like, a detail, I can print you a whole detail.
So has that a hundred and eighty-five already been taken out of it?
I, I believe so, but I can-
Yeah, we need to know that.
That's a big difference. And if we've only paid for one quarter, we have three quarters left to pay?
Two. I think they do it in thirds.
That's right.
They pull three times your horse's tail?
Oh, no, if we pull out, how soon will we get this done?
July 1st.
It'd be July 1st.
Oh, it will be July 1st, okay.
So I suppose half the money about has come in through the levy, right? Or do people pay half, you know, in September and half in March?
Till July.
Well, it'll be down to fourteen thousand.
So this four, so this Fund 10 can literally be put to zero by this group before we do anything.
The twenty-eight E agreement says we owe it, so.
Well, no, yeah, I mean, they could, they could legally steal it, is what you're saying.
Yeah, they can take every dime out of there.
They've already, since two thousand seventeen, they've probably already legally stolen a million dollars from us. So it is legalized now. But because it goes to a cause where the intentions are good, you're all supposed to be happy. I guarantee you, the supervisors that look down their snout at them, their damn CSS board meetings, if they were, if I took a million dollars out of their county and spent somewhere else, I bet they'd be crabbing.
So you're thinking right now-
My intentions are good, so I'm not a trip.
Everything that's supposed to come in yet from levies in March will go directly towards payments to CSS. So that just leaves the fourteen thousand, the fund balance. Unless, unless Bob does have a balance at the end.
I think the hundred and eighty-five is still in there.
No, well, I, that's two thousand eighteen, I-
Oh, yeah, that makes a difference.
Yes, it does. Well, it does say two thousand eighteen, I'm going to put there when I squint, it almost looks like a nine on my glasses.
Yes, um, they have the, they have the nineteenth on them, and they need the twelfth on them, so it tells that one of the two dates.
So really, that's-
So the hundred and eighty-six is already out, and then I will pull up the right years.
But, because I, I saw the, the hundred and eighty-six was in the last, uh, seven month claims. So that ended, that ended up going out, it was in there.
There, it does.
They probably give it back to us.
Two thousand eighteen.
No, it doesn't have to.
Okay, that shows the payment?
Yep.
So we still have, it's around seventy, eighty thousand.
Here's what we did last year, but that was when we weren't paying.
Yeah, and we put on page one hundred and thirty-two because I didn't know how much that they were going to take out, and they requested the whole four hundred and thirty-two, so.
Yeah, you can keep it.
No, I'm just curious, well, what, do you justify where exactly that money goes? Is there a tracking system, public tracking system for public?
It goes straight, it, it goes straight into, to CSS's coffers, and then they pay you all the salaries that are paid everywhere else, and all the services that are paid everywhere else. They subsidize Blacklock County's failing business model on their facility and, until it's gone, I mean, the, the money all went to things like that.
You could get that, for any more information.
I was going to say, this should be able to be tracked.
Well, they tried to make it, we couldn't have those numbers.
No, I know, I know that. Those are public dollars.
Yeah, the public can get them, and they weren't going to give them to us, but they had to have voted the board, and then, then after the state got, then he gave it to us, that information to us, several different versions of it, without a vote of the board. So then he violated his own resolution, anyway. You're supposed to just sit down, shut up, and send your money.
Uh, no, no, quaal- morphine.
That's a county that I don't remember.
I, I, I just-
That was on that one, I held it off the right, I was sitting there, and I don't remember.
That's probably a good thing, that's probably a good thing.
The only thing I remember, my only ambulance ride was, what am I doing?
So last year we said zero to four hundred and thirty-two thousand. What do they want to say this year? Seventy-seven?
I would say zero to-
It's going to be at least the seventy-seven, right? So unless he's going to come in with amendments to the levy.
I, I don't, I don't think they can, I think they have to allow you to leave, uh, if I remember somewhere, I, I either read or heard that they have to allow you to leave with your fund balance, that fund balance is yours.
But what happens this year if he goes on a spending spree like that? One year, we ended up, happened to put more money than the levy in.
Well, and that, I think, I don't think they can take us below the legal percentage. Just unfortunately, it's unfortunate, we have a hundred, two hundred percent fund balance, whatever it was.
But isn't that number a suggestion? Because it's suggestion, suggested-
Suggestion that you keep that, but I think-
No, it's suggested by the state in our general budget that we keep a fund balance carryover at fifteen to twenty percent. It's not a law, it's just a suggestion.
So I think it's, I, I, I think it's, it's a mandated, I, I, I believe that the legislature, they're the ones that voted on it, to spend the fund balances down.
For, as I said, for their groups.
For, for all, for the whole state, that, that, they-
They made a specific for mental health.
I don't know whether they saw a great big pot of money in some of the counties that had large fund balances like we did, and our reward for being frugal was getting it taken away and having it spent by somebody else. And we'll need to check that out then.
I missed this here. Okay, we'll just tell everybody, no checks this time.
So are we going to say from zero to seventy-eight thousand?
I don't think they can take it all, but, but until we find out exactly.
And if your twenty-eight E agreement says it's the overall fund balance of the whole twenty-two counties, it could be more than that. I'm unsure what it says.
Or it could be less.
Or it could be less, yeah.
Okay, so should we say our current fund balance is just shy of seventy, we can use the exact number, but it could be higher if there is carryover fund.
Give them the facts, and we'll, it is right now, you're right, and then, explain the scenario.
It was basically seventy-eight.
Call it seventy-eight thousand.
Yeah, just call it seventy-eight.
It was, it was, it was seventy, seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred something.
Yep. But that, this is from my own information, that number will change too, because we've got two more quarters to pay, right?
No, but-
Depends how long you stay in there, that's the number will be.
Oh, that was my question, but Terry said we're going to, we're going to have to pay up till July 1st.
We still have money to collect for the taxpayers.
Right.
And that will probably go directly toward- And that will probably go directly towards the payments.
If... Well, if, if we get accepted into the region, I think we can leave at any time. I don't, there isn't, I don't think you have to wait until... Or may, maybe it's...
Do you have the, uh...
But the big thing is...
Twenty-eighty agreement on computer?
No.
Do you?
What?
You have the twenty-eighty agreement on computer?
It's in my office.
Oh, can I get a copy? Not, not right now, it's a take home.
If I had my briefcase with me, I, I have it in there, yeah.
So our answer's gonna be whatever number you come up with?
Well, just put it on there, it should be, it should be around, uh, seventy-eight thousand, it should be.
It's seventy-seven, nine, thirty-eight, eighty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Now, this is the actual fund balance now.
We're gonna have egg on our face if it, if Bob screws us. Isn't it up in here?
Because this, to me, he could go snatch this by spending whatever...
I, I believe...
What's to stop him? I'm, I'm just curious, what, what, what stops him?
Stops him from them not writing the check?
I think, I think there, I think there is, there's, uh, there's, uh, state, what do you call it?
Mandate?
Mandate, or, I think there's something in the state code, that's what I was looking for, that says you have to be allowed to leave with so much fund balance.
But he has to spend it, though.
Then he has to give it back to us, because he has to allow us to leave, but the code says you're gonna get this much of your fund balance, that he, if he spends it, then he's gonna have to cough it up, I would assume.
Well, I said, be able to give us the legal part of it?
Probably better than me, yeah.
Or somebody, or Kelsey.
Or Kelly, yeah, she can pull up the code.
But we don't have a whole lot of time between now.
No, I know, it's...
I think we just need to have a safe answer.
I just think, unsure, you know?
Well, just...
Because you really are unsure.
This is our current fund balance, and hopefully it will be about that.
Yeah, that's great.
But we don't have...
And when we get the exact figures, we can share that with you.
Yeah, but we are totally dependent on, on the functions of the CSS budget. Okay, so what else do we need to answer on this?
On that form? Well, then, she had a question, she, the overall email that she wanted some questions answered.
There was this provider...
Yeah, and so what I did, I just sent you, just... This is information you requested, and the providers you have are Public Health, the sheriff, and pharmacy, and the pharmacy that we use, and then, Carrick Bridge Integrated Healthcare is here in Fort City, and then they wanna know who the other providers were that we use, so I just listed the ones that I'm familiar with, and it's either county funding or Medicaid funding, not all, you know? And then, I think that's what, what they asked, so I think if, you should take a look at this, if this is something what you wanna do, then you could put it on your Winnebago County letterhead and address it to Kim Wilson, and...
We went through this with Donna, right?
We went through this other form here, which was kinda confusing. Yeah, I think on the original letter, it, um, it said to get that to Kim by tomorrow, email it, and then you should, need to send a paper copy, I thought it said, okay?
So our, our copy tomorrow also, they'll get emailed first?
Yeah, they need, they want it tomorrow, then send out, uh... It was in the original letter that she sent with, or their attorney sent with her email.
I, I believe it says in the state code that you can take your fund balance with you when you leave, no matter what it is.
But what if it's not?
Had we done this year, we could save almost a half million dollars.
Oh, here it says here that they wanted to, Kim, and with their copy to their attorney here, I think that Carla has, I guess she's the one that forwarded to me, I think, so.
Do I have?
That, the email that you got from them stating what they wanted, and then, um, the information of where it goes back to.
I didn't send that to you, did I?
Well, I got it from you and Bill.
It's all from Bill. I don't get anything from you.
In Iowa, what is the code for the MHDS ending fund balance?
I found these results.
Those are not that good.
Yeah, right, and it's, so when you get all that stuff put together, we're done. I'm not gonna do them, I forget the letterhead.
Well, you have to get the letter ready, and I'll put the letterhead.
Okay, well, it's more or less right here, this is what I did already. Yeah, they wanna go to her and to a copy to their attorney over there that wrote the letter. And then this other thing that they're asking for, I thought it was kinda confusing. They didn't ask for this last year, it's just, uh, and balances other regions, and we went through, Donna and I, what this region does, but we're really unsure what they do over there, because I do...
Yeah, it shouldn't happen to bears.
Yeah, I, and then, um, then they talked about the twenty-eighty agreement, well, I don't know the sum of, the differences and the similarities between them.
The, the twenty-eightys were very similar.
Were they?
I remember that when I read theirs, read ours, the twenty-eightys were very similar.
Did Kelsey look it? There's twenty-eighty?
Seems like we did. But last year, last year, when we tried to do all this.
Okay, so do we have a game plan on this thing? The only ones we had to fill in was your information, your...
I used, I guess last year, we used the courthouse address and my email.
Yeah, it's on last year's board.
Is it, okay.
And then we just got the last question on that. Question we have to change.
So about Cassuth County, number seven.
Number seven, we were gonna kind of, we figured Cassuth County should answer that question.
You agree that, you should get that information from Cassuth County?
Yeah. That, that information should go there.
You should have gotten that information from Cassuth County.
So I think we're kinda down to that, we've got all the information put together, then...
Okay, so what do you want me to do?
Work with Carla to get it on a letterhead, and, yeah. We need to complete these questions.
We have those written down, Carla?
I didn't write it down.
Can I, can I get, get a printout of that?
I have the fund balance, and I have Bill's address, and the courthouse address, I don't know what else we need.
Okay. Just change that number seven.
Yeah, Bill suggested we should have gotten that information from Cassuth County.
As I understand it, they do. I guess, I mean, that's the way I understand it, they have, they have these next year.
So do you think overall, this just, the tax or the information as far as services, you think that's okay the way, and just have her put it on, on the, your letterhead?
We're gonna have to go back to the E twenty-eight, because legislators passed, the legislation passed this year allows counties to have up to twenty-five percent of their annual budgets in the bank. So if East County has the individual authority to have twenty-five percent, um, what was I supposed to say, what was that?
Twenty-five percent, the twenty-five percent is...
To have that, you...
It's basically ninety thousand dollars. Seventy, ran it seventy at twenty percent, and, uh, ninety...
Are you gonna be around for a while? I can go down and, and get this, because you're gonna have to sign it, or who's gonna sign?
Well, can he sign?
I don't know.
He's a designated. And here, we, we have the...
Where, you signed the letter, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, is it, is it this, is it the end of this letter, then? Is this the end of it?
Well, you want the, you want an address to Kim and a copy to the attorney with your letterhead on it, more or less, if this is what you want, wanted to say.
Right. And then attach the other questions?
Yes, yeah, and then email it, and it's in a copy to both of them.
Well, I don't think we'll put this on the letter, and you've got this digitally, right? You can, you can...
I can't do it.
So how did you type this up? Do you have a document that you printed?
Yes, I just printed that and I sent it out.
And you sent that to her?
I think she already has it.
This one?
But I don't know how to, I don't know how to do this thing.
All right. So you can just copy and paste that onto the letterhead?
Yep.
If we can get that done, then I can just sign it before I leave.
Yeah, and then it goes to, it's got Kim's address, and then a copy to that attorney over there.
And the rest of you will just have to fill in the questions.
Yeah, just change them.
So, I guess, I would maintain...
I'll make a motion to approve the letter to Northwest Iowa Care Connections.
On a motion from Jensen's second, for entry to approve the letter to Northwest Iowa Care Connections. All those favorites say aye.
Aye.
All those pros saying aye. Motion carries. Grainage matters.
She's seventy-five eleven.
This is Chris.
We're ready for you.
Okay, thank you.
So Carla, you'll be doing the letter here, is there anything?
You gotta do the, the, I don't know, I'll just do it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Mike?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything for grainage? Does anybody else have anything for grainage? Um, I did have a question. D eleven tree row? Where the, uh, you know, it comes in, and it goes like this, and it goes like this, and then it crosses the road. There's the curved road that goes like this at the leland. There's a little bit that goes like this, and there are trees in that area.
You're only taking out what's in the right of way of the ditch.
Right, and we're talking, so I'm just wondering, do we need to do something to get rid of these trees just at the beginning of that ditch?
That would be a Rick Hopper question.
Yeah.
Um, I would think no, if it's not in the right way.
It's part of the district, because this feeds into it, but...
It's just like a waterway or whatever.
Yeah, and it was done, it was a dumb ditch.
It's a, okay.
So it's the end of the open ditch?
Well, oh, here's, here is...
I mean, where does D eleven come into the lower part?
That's up here.
Okay.
We annexed this.
But we annexed in from north of the road. And then this is D ten, like, this is north.
Yeah.
So this is D ten where it comes in and meets to D eleven.
Actually, the road is here, and there's, on this side of the road, and this is eleven that comes here. Some, it's farther, a little bit farther out, but yeah, ten comes into eleven on that other road.
That doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry.
Is that a, is that a county facility, that, that ditch, or is that a private ditch?
Well, this all got annexed, that's what my question is.
Okay, so eleven came to here, we annexed in this, and this right here. So this was from ten, eleven comes from the north, so it doesn't come from over here.
So ten doesn't even show a connection there, but...
Because it's the natural waterway, and that's what we brought in, is, that's, from here to over to the river is eleven's natural waterway, eleven lower main. So ten feet into that to get to eleven.
But the natural waterway shows here, but it doesn't show there.
Right.
Um, so what I'm talking about is right here.
Okay. If, if it's, no, I, I, I'm, my personal opinion is that no, we are only taking out of the right of way of the open natural waterway.
Okay.
Because the other part, that wasn't, I mean, that land is annexed in because it drains into it, but we didn't annex that natural waterway.
So the only way to do that and be able to levy somebody for it is develop a district.
You have to annex that part in.
Of some sort. So we have to have somebody petition for that.
And if it's only one person that would, that's on it?
Well, it's affecting everything up here.
Yeah, so that'd be a Rick Hopper question. But if they want that cleared by a district, they would have to annex that in and be part of the district.
Well, I'll talk to them and see, if you wanna see if you can petition or not.
Otherwise, they can split it, and they can talk to that Jay Petticoat to see if they would do it for them while they're there.
Well, that's how I'm... See, you're not on there already, so your price is never gonna get cheaper.
But it cannot be on my, on my bill.
Here, one again?
All right, I'll do some investigation on that.
Okay. Okay.
I didn't wanna make any promises.
All right.
But, yeah, it's funny how it's, it's only, it seems like it's only maybe two hundred feet up that ditch, and then it cleans up.
Right.
So...
But nobody's taken care of that.
There are a few trees that would probably go with the right of way, but the rest of them, yeah. Anything else for grainage? Open forum. So open the door. This is the, see it there.
You're wrong, or you can get away. Yeah.
Okay, consider for, anything else for open forum?
Well, you start with my copy.
Okay, consider for approval, public purpose policy for elections.
I don't...
What's the purpose behind this?
So we can spend money to.
Spend your food and beverages for the election workers.
Yeah. Fish and candy pens. There it is.
Okay, sure.
Would you like to be up in twelve hours?
I was.
We're in.
Yes, I was.
Sorry.
And, and they brought me donuts.
That was public purpose.
I assume you want food, beverages, tokens, and service such as election pins, candy pens.
Can't please everyone.
I know, you can't.
Take your patent with you.
Uh, yeah. I don't know, it was just kinda humorous because everybody there was the same way, so. We just kinda laughed about it and passed them on.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, uh, to approve public purpose policy for elections.
Oh, yes, I do.
I'll second that. A motion from Derby and a second from Stenjer, all those favorites say aye. Aye. All those opposed saying aye. A roll. Did you want to say anything?
That thing that she needs to fix, she sent me in a PDF, so I can't fix it even if I wanted to. She's gonna have to either get it to me in a real document or in Word document, or she's gonna have to do it.
I suppose what they sent her was.
Well, no, because she's changed stuff in there.
We might be able to open it with Word as a way you can convert it back.
Right.
Okay.
So are we all three signing or just me?
Well, I just put your name, if you want me to put all three of you, I can do it.
Are we in open forum?
We can go back to open forum.
Oh, wait, I missed it. I was just gonna say, I found your email, and I don't have a good answer, other than it got blocked by our spam filter. But I just thought this was funny, I don't understand, these are all, I did a search to only show, this is all the same email that came into all the different people here.
Yeah.
And for some reason, when it came to you, it decided it was spam.
Oh, really?
And so you get these emails once in a while where it says.
Yeah, yeah.
So you would, it should have been, this is not yet, this is mine.
It should have been under one of those.
It should have been, yeah, so it would have been on the.
I just automatically, as soon as I see those, I delete them.
Oh, well.
So, you know, every now and then I'll look to see what it's actually from, but it's always from some goofy thing.
Yeah.
So now, I guess if this happens in the future, I can look on there and see.
Yeah, so those quarantine notices send once a day, if you've gotten anything that is new in there. And so the Saturday morning one, they come out at like five AM. So the one that came on Saturday morning should have shown that in there, and if you release it, then it could, would come through. But I just went and I released it.
You never release it because you never know what's behind it, but if it's.
Yeah. Yeah, and if you're going, well, I usually get that, and I didn't get it, and that looks like the right thing. You, I mean, you're, you're okay to release it, if it had a virus in it, it would.
No, exactly that.
I can't promise a hundred percent that very highly it would get blocked. Again, even after you released it, it would go, oh, no, I won't let you, I won't let you because it's bad. So. Yeah, I have no idea, though, it sent it to like twenty people here, and yours is the only one, and it happened last week, too. But before that, it didn't, so.
Why is it just your agenda?
I don't know, well, and it's just you, because it let the same exact email go through to everybody else, it might have been, I don't know, we use this mail sending thing called MailChimp, and they have like hundreds of email servers, because they do this kinda thing for all kinds of huge companies and stuff, so it might have been one of their email servers that your message went through, got like blacklisted, but just that one server, and so then when it came to here, it's like, oh, that's bad.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know, I don't have a good answer, but. I released them, that's why you just got them.
Yeah, no, I'm like, well, there they are.
Well, you try to keep an eye on that in the future.
It's funny that it would blacklist me on the agenda email, but not on the rest emails I get from her.
Yeah, well, yeah, and it's, these go through a different system, which makes sense, that MailChimp thing, so it says it's from her, but it actually comes through MailChimp.
Alright.
And, you know, all the gritty, gritty details that everybody loves to hear from the IT nerds, but.
In the nerd, in the nerd, in the nerd audience, you'd really be getting some people on the edge of the seat.
Yeah, might have got a hallelujah. So. The loss has been found, and I apologize, but it's not a perfect system. Although it's way better than not having.
At least it's trying to find something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we would all be virus ridden and.
I think, I think there are other emails that were broken.
If we didn't have it. That's all.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Carla, I need the rest of the table.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I got here for the most important part of the meeting. Drainage.
Yeah, I'm glad you were here.
Otherwise, I just, my week could be just shot.
Really, that's interesting.
Give me one call and update the sheriff on it, though.
I'm gonna, yeah, that's my next call, is Dave, you're not gonna believe this, but.
I can believe you left before drainage. Unless Jay was on fire, I can't think what else would be left.
This is received.
Yeah.
I do my classic, Winchell's has a special, but we don't have a Winchell's. Guys, it's been fun, stay calm, stay warm.
Yeah, I'll be, it'll get better.
Yeah, exactly.
But the nasty season means July.
Yeah, this was the coldest night, and, yeah.
Yeah, it's still a little normal, but it's a lot warmer than it is right now.
Oh, yeah.
It's, uh, it's a lot of blast, long range forecast I saw.
I got friends down south that are complaining left and right.
It's too hot.
It's too cold.
Too cold, don't get cold.
Yeah, they're, they're chilling out down south, too, it's like, oh my gosh, what the hell?
It's global warming.
That's exactly, that's precisely what it might be.
It's, it's, yeah, that's what I tell everybody, this is why this, this global warming dream get me upset. Either I tell him I've gotta call it to Al Gore so he can explain this global warming to me one more time.
Well, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see why it's so cold, and because it is warming.
But they do, they do call it climate change now, so no matter what happens, we have to send the billions to study.
Pretty much.
I don't know how many times, I think it's like six, they had to revise their end of the world, sooner. Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
Oh, the doomsday clock, yeah.
And they're at it again, Jane Bond again. It's like, uh. If we don't do anything, she went on a tirade, and if we don't do anything, we will, she said, we will be dead in ten years.
Word of the year was climate protest.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they just changed the, they just changed the doomsday clock again.
And Mad, and Mad, your apparent, your, and your mom, I was telling my kids, I says, and when she, when she turns forty, she'll say if you still say it.
Well, I was watching a movie with some friends, and there was this one scene where they're coming into London, and this was back in the nineteen tens, back in World War One, and they had this true life form scene of all the smog coming out of the chimneys and everything else like that, because it was coal fired. I wonder how much we manufactured back then to create the problem that we have now?
None.
Or is it, are we manufacturing more now than we did back then, when every house had to have coal fired house heating in order to survive?
I don't know, they just gas. I find it hard pressed that we think we can control these.
Well, the sun's never the same size, the earth is never the same size.
Yeah, yeah, and our, we have an elliptical.
Exactly.
This is, the climate has been changing ever since we, you know, and, and when we had Ice Age and it warmed up, and then we had Many Ice Ages, it's been warming up ever since. No, I'm not. And then we had the Kansas Dust Bowl with the ball of things. You know, I don't think we would have hit the Kansas Dust Bowl with today, if we would have had today's farming practices, where everything's planted early, and then you get the crop up, it may have died off, but the crop would have been there to hold the dust. Then it got, but you know, back in those days, you would get, and maybe, maybe they had some. All the record sending disasters during the end of century of eighteen hundreds. They were the worst.
And what were we doing?
They used to, they used to grow grapes in, is it Ireland? Back in the medieval days, they grew grapes there, it's too cold to grow grapes now.
Well, we got glaciers that are just occurring in Iceland. And a friend of mine joked the other day, he says, I was gonna interview this dinosaur, but he never showed up.
But in Antarctica, it's never been bigger.
That's right.
And growing. When, when you're talking about polar bears, and I was up in Alaska, caring, and the state troopers, gang wardens flying on airplanes, and like, land on the ground, and checking, checking, check you out, and all that stuff. And I was talking to one of them, and he, it was the decimation of the polar bears because of the ice caps melting and all that, and, you know, down here, the news. So I asked him about it, and he goes, no, no, those are everywhere, he says, they're like rats.
They would argue that it's driving them farther south.
Yeah, well, that's, but they're surviving, that's, they're not all, they take a picture of some emaciated old polar bear that can't catch food anymore, and say that that's the average healthy polar bear now, you know, there's a lot of people that believe that's the way they all are.
Guys, take care.
For two reasons, one, the shape doesn't look too familiar, and the other thing, I remember last, it's a little dark.
So did you start your work? Is it numb?
It takes a lot of work every day to do that, supposed to be moving it in two hours, I mean, physically, I have to do like fifteen minutes, and then two hours.
So long.
To stretch it, to stretch it to the core range.
To keep it moving in. So like, right now, when I try to tidy, I can't hit the P, P is the worst one to hit. So no, it's not worth it, it's great, but.
It's better?
Are you numb at all?
I'm not doing another search, let's put it that way.
Are you numb at all, your fingers?
Uh, it's very little, that doesn't have the sensitivity, so it's grown, it's coming back that way, but it still has the mobility, which is great. They were happy up there, was how it turned out, the range I had when I started, but they're, whether in the next month or might get better. Cold weather does not help.
No.
They gave me a steroid shot, so it wouldn't get as cold.
What shot?
Steroid.
So it won't get cold?
Right.
I'm Michael Jackson most of the day.
I don't know, it's like a twelve hundred dollar steroid shot or whatever.
I can focus on that. I don't know, that worked. Michael Jackson couldn't feel his nose. No, one blow. Oh. One mitten. Now, now, now I've got a bad joke in my head. We have adjourned, you better not.
I'll, I'll, I'm not.
Soon as you adjourned, I'll tell it to you.
I see that farm around my dad's place sold for eighty-one fifty.
Yeah.
He used to live.
Who had it?
Uh, this guy, my dad, that inherited from his dad.
He bought it?
Uh, Wayne Johnson.
Oh, Wayne, yeah. Eighteen.
Three hundred acres.
Uh-huh.
Three hundred acres. But it's really good land.
Yeah, yeah, that's good farm. Well, say it raised, say it raised three hundred bushel corn. At today's prices, that's twelve bucks. An indigenous son had four dollars, so that's twelve hundred bucks. Two million, four hundred forty-five thousand dollars. Well, whatever.
But the reason he sold it was, he wanted to invest in a four hundred dollar hotel out in Rapid City. Because his daughter wanted it.
Almost right. Well. They split basketball.
And this is one piece of land he owns in this area, he owns, similar by O'Kevoy, and he owns Red River Valley.
Is Wayne Johnson, sorry, got much land out that way, too, but he does have a grain facility out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was all of ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, he bought that grain facility from my brother, the boss.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll.
I'll second. A motion from Stenjer and a second from Jensen to approve the payroll claims, all those favorites say aye. Aye. All those opposed saying aye. Motion carries. Thanks for your support on that vote.
Well, none of us said no, we're against it, so I assume, yeah, yeah, so, yeah. Well, none of us said no, I was more than against it, so I assume, yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
Good thing I said so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.